We're partying, five thirty, five thirty-one closing up, calling and leaving the order. And I'd like to ask for Senator Coleman, Phil, lead us in a prayer and a pledge, please, sir.
Let's go ahead and pray. Father, we ask now that you be with us as we seek to follow your guidance in this life. We thank you so much for these men and women who choose to serve you through working in this city. We ask for your wisdom and your patience as we seek to do your will. We thank you so much for your grace and love and support always. And we ask all these things to your son and our Savior's name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America and the Southern Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tony, thank you. You're welcome to stay. You can run out the door, whatever.
I got my better half out there.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it so much.
Yes, sir. Thanks for the invite.
All right. Open forum. City manager, anything there?
There are no speakers.
Nothing? Okay, okay. Special presentation and announcements. So.
So the, yeah, so the special presentation tonight, we're pleased to bring you Catherine Parker, who's a local businesswoman here and one of her partners, Sela with Express My Brand. We got with them and, you know, we started the strategic planning and this is further refining that and then also developing an updated logo for the city. So. But. And I'm gonna turn it over to Sela and Catherine. We appreciate being here tonight, you guys.
This is Sala here. It is a privilege to join you all tonight for the city meeting. Catherine and I have had an incredible experience working with Cynthia and Jessica, looking at speaking into a place of brand where we hold the equity and the history and the, and so much of the meaning within the city of Breckenridge. And we're able to project into the future as the city leadership is around the table tonight, working on plans to both benefit the citizens and attract new people into the city. And that's what the power of brand is doing. It is helping to answer the question of what do we want to be known for? And help people from our internal employee city culture to our external visitors and residents that will join our city in the future to understand the true beauty that is within Breckenridge. And so Jessica, if you can walk me here through the presentation deck.
Yeah.
We'll get started.
The first slide, can you see it, Cynthia?
Yes, this is perfect. I'll just say next, yes. So here we stand tonight as leadership, again, upholding everything that we both honor and looking forward to what we hold in the future. And the beauty that we were able to bring through the brand, I'm going to, I'm going to showcase here in the messaging. And so first, let me just kind of give some direction on the internal messaging. Our goal in this area here is to underscore the city's dedication to preserving Breckenridge's rich history and heritage while fostering a forward-thinking spirit, ensuring a fulfilling experience for all who call Breckenridge home. And it's good that we are able to communicate to the residents and citizens here within our current community, just the value that they have within the city leadership. I'll tell you, working with Cynthia, she is a powerhouse. I think I told you when Cynthia, you're a force to be reckoned with. And I love that you are boldly leading into the future. And I believe that tonight, that we want to, we wanted to show all of the commissioners here tonight that we are speaking to our residents and helping them see that the city and its leadership is bolding, leading Breckenridge and that they can trust us. They can trust us with beautification and improvement projects, that we can use this messaging in a place to help bring understanding to the many ways that the city works to benefit and help everyone see that together we are building a community where everyone can thrive. Next slide, please. So let's unpack a few things. There's a lot to look at here. So if you don't mind, follow my voice and let's start with the vision statement. That's up here in the top corner because the vision is speaking into the future. It's painting that picture and it's showing everyone that as, as Breckenridge continues, it's going to be a thriving, family-centered community in the heart of Texas, welcoming and fostering growth, investment and tourism. That is what we are working towards for decades to come in the vision of how we see ourselves positioned in a place of both warmth and growth. And then the way that we accomplish a vision is through the boots-on-the-ground mission statement. And this is a statement that I believe you all have worked on diligently. And we felt that there was so much, it spoke so much of the work, again, of this team that's gathered tonight, that we want our citizens to know that you are consistently planning for a higher quality of life through positive community relationships that value the citizens and welcome visitors in inviting business, business growth by focusing on innovation, education and safety. There's a lot packed in that, but when you put those two together, we say that by doing the boots-on-the-ground work of our mission statement, that's again, work around the table tonight, all of those efforts, all of the agencies that are represented in partnership, all the, all the city employees and their different sectors and departments will all help that vision statement come to pass. And then it's good to see that our purpose, this is a way that we are able to communicate on a daily basis, again, helping inform our citizens of the leadership that they have, that they have elected to lead the city. And we want them to know that the purpose of the city leadership is to lead our city with strategic initiatives that elevate our community, educate our citizens, encourage civic engagement and enhance the well-being of our residents. These are tactile and tangible ways that residents can see all of the ways that, again, there's a diversification of purpose across the various city departments. I'll make one creative note here because in brand, we are also about informative and strategy as much with a touch of creativity. And we had a lot of fun here working with the team. If you look through the purpose statement, there's four words that all start with the letter E and they're verbs. And there's the word elevate, educate, encourage and enhance. And what we want is we want this messaging, we want it to be memorable and for it to be portable so that employees, and again, stretching across the swath of the leadership can all remember. And these can become pillars that we can educate on for years to come through social media, through our website, we can run different initiatives, again, across the city and help people see this is how we're working on your behalf. And when we do all of that, it creates a promise. It helps our residents say, you know what, our promise to you is on safety, education and forward-thinking that's going to usher our community into a future brimming with opportunity. And I'll tell you, just like the buckaroos, like everyone wants to be a part of the winning team. And I think it's beautiful that the, that we can put this messaging into a place where we can align residents who have been a part of the city for decades and ones who are just moving into the area. Same thing with business initiatives that they can see that what our commitment to is going to, again, all lead towards the evolution of the vision. And so let's look over now to the left-hand side and let's talk about core values. We're, if we're building a community where everyone can thrive, let's add a little extra to the values. And I'm not going to take time to read them all tonight. I know we, we have a lot on the agenda. But I do want you to see the B R E C K acronym and the bold, responsible, excellent, compassionate and knowledgeable values that we want everyone to uphold. We say where anyone has a seat on the bus, we want them to be able to see that, we want them to bring these values to the job every day. We want every agency to be a part of the collective upholding of our reputation. Remember, everything is what do we want to be known for here? And so I'd love to just invite you to take some time to digest this conversation after tonight and look at how we expressed those values. Listen to the words and the tone and how we're, we're calling everyone collectively into a place of excellence, into a place of accountability and ownership. And so as you can see, with our goal to enhance the awareness of Breckenridge, correct misconceptions and communicate value, we've put together an internal messaging package that can bring alignment across agencies, across leadership and across employees. Okay, now we'll step over and let's look at the external messaging for a moment. So that was focused on aligning our internal culture and bringing awareness to our residents of our leadership and how it's working on their behalf. Now let's imagine a conversation in the brand, speaking to an external audience, someone who has yet to experience truly the beauty of Breckenridge. And so this messaging package is going to do a greater work of bringing awareness through the lens of attracting and in those new residents and in those new visitors. And so we put together a tagline for the city of Breckenridge, which is the beauty of Texas beckons. And I'll share that word, beauty, is designed to hold a holistic meaning. And I'll tell you, as I got to work with Catherine and Cynthia and the leadership team, I mean, I was able to hear over and over again, just how much, how much is held within the city. Again, from history and heritage to local shopping and dining as the downtown district evolves and just the beauty of the people. And that's lost if you go across to different metropolitan cities or if you cross the, you know, cross, across the nation and head over to different states. I won't name them all, but we all know that there are quite a few cities, especially out on the coastlines, that may, that don't carry that beauty. They are known for other things. But we want people to know that there is a beauty within Texas. There is a, there's a place that they can call home. And we love the idea of beckons. It's going to call to you. Come check us out. Come visit us. Come be a part of a staycation. Come look at moving and growing your business here with the land and the development opportunities. What about a beautiful place to raise a family from where someone might be challenged in their areas? And so we want that tagline, again, to hold so much meaning. And this external messaging is going to capture that appeal, the showcasing, the natural beauty, the rich cultural history and many of the activities and amenities that are, again, embodied within the community spirit. Next slide, please. So let's unpack our external messaging package and let's look at the lens here of how we're, again, speaking to someone on the outside. We wanted to bake together a positioning statement and show everyone that we've got history, hospitality and a hometown feel. We want there to be warmth and energy in the messaging that we're speaking, again, not in a, in a, in a corporate voice or out of a dated kind of context, but we're speaking to the full embodiment of what is beckoning in Breckenridge. And we love, again, bringing things that are memorable and portable. Again, in brand, we want it to be concise and say a lot in just a few words. There's a lot of psychology that is baked into this type of messaging that's written. And so here we're telling people, come unplug, unwind and discover something unique in Breckenridge. We're giving a teaser of what could be there. And then the amazing B R E C K and our core values had to just live in our external because, again, that's what helps us all come into a place of alignment. And we loved being able to pull out some of those unique elements, the buckaroo pride, the rich heritage, telling people, come explore the outdoors, that there is this beauty of community charm, all the amenities offered and ultimately kick back and relax. And I think that when we put these pieces together, they're going to lean into different motivations, again, for a variety of audiences. And you have to ask yourself around the table tonight, who do we want to attract to our city? There's a beautiful culture in Breckenridge. We also equally want to protect it. And we say every brand needs to do a great job of attracting the right people and equally keeping the ones that we don't want there away. And so that was our goal, is to capture the high points that would really resonate, again, with the audiences we want to attract. And then we'll just speak a touch further in the bottom section below. When we talk about Breckenridge beckons, we're again showcasing this myriad of opportunity from lakes, murals and memories await. I hope you, again, can hear just how that would sound to someone who has not experienced the city. And again, it's going to peak and draw their attention into experiencing rich Texas history with modern-day charm. We don't want to lose everything that made our city great in its history and everything that the culture embodies today. But we also want to showcase it in a way that is appealing, again, as we lean into the future. And so you can take some time after today with the handout to look at the live, the work, the play. We're keeping in mind here, again, a variety of audiences and in various industries that I know that the city wants to attract. And we believe that as we begin to present Breckenridge in this way, it's going to show people that there's a place that's rooted in history and it's blooming with hospitality for them to come and to join us. And so as I wrap up here in the messaging, Jessica, I don't believe there's one more slide, is there?
The, the rest of the slides coming up with the logo.
Okay, perfect.
Ready?
So I'll just wind down here and I'll say, thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to bring a strategic positioning to the city. And, and I hope that you find a beautiful expression to the messaging, that these are words that we can all begin to digest, that we can use in all of our places of marketing and all of our places of promotion. And that's going to be equal, again, from the synergy within the internal side of our culture to the external appeal in our marketing. If anyone has any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. And with that, I will turn it over to Catherine Parker.
Go ahead.
Catherine. Sorry. I warned you. Okay, Catherine, can you hear now?
Yes, can y'all hear me?
Yes, I'm sorry about that.
I was just trying to call Cynthia because I was like, oh my gosh, I cannot sing to myself. Well, hi, everybody. I think I know several of you in the room, but I'm Catherine Parker, now post. So thank y'all so much for having me at the meeting tonight. I'm super excited to talk about the logo options. I know at this point, all of you have already seen them. And so hopefully you got really positive vibes from everything and great and just felt like really good about what you saw. But I am very passionate about Breckenridge. And so not only was it a privilege for me, but it was a passion for me to be able to collaborate on this project. So I am going to follow the slides here and talk about the designs. I also want to talk about the pros and cons of some of the different logo options and just kind of share my thoughts with you guys, not only as I designed them, but also just like how I see them moving forward with Breckenridge. So in this version, this is a favorite of mine, but you'll see in the top left, the internal versus the external logo. So just like Sala did with the messaging, I tried to follow suit with her to show how a logo could be used for the city employees, but then also be used to attract tourism and different industries. So on the left, you'll see there's just a slot variation between the left and right logos here. And the left one shows city of with the star being in the O of of. And that's very strategically placed. That's actually where Breckenridge is on the map. And when Cynthia came to us wanting me to do these logos, she had some very specific requirements about what she wanted to see. And one of that was in God we trust, which is in our current logo. She wanted to see that kept. And I think that that's awesome. I think that's a great reflection of Breckenridge and who we are. I love that we don't have to worry about, you know, getting away with that. So I think that's awesome. But then when we go over to the external version of this, this is where we incorporate that messaging of the beauty of Texas beckons, which is great. So we could use this logo both internally and externally. The B, as you can see, is very recognizable, not, I love that about it. I also love that the B is something that you kind of are used to seeing. Like Abilene has a logo that's kind of, you know, similar with the little swoosh and the lines and stuff like that. So it's very typical of a city logo. And that being said, you know, I also, we also didn't want to use it by itself because we wanted to be different, right? We didn't want to conform to what other people look like. So I think that this is a strong logo option. I love the bold lines. I think it would translate well across the different mediums. So as we talk about that, you can see how it goes to letterhead, business cards, envelopes. It translates really nicely to paper. It looks great on the fleet vehicles. It's a, it's almost a perfectly symmetrical logo. I love how it's centered in the middle of the text says. It incorporates the bright green and the dark green, which those of you who are from here know that there's kind of this battle of what is the true like Breckenridge buckaroo green. The old folks say that it used to be the dark. People my age think it's the Kelly green and now we're back to the dark. So it's kind of this, you know, fusing the old with the new. And so I do love that it's got both of the greens here. And then as you can see, how it translates across the T-shirts, mugs, water bottles, backpacks, all this different merch items, it just looks really sharp. So I think this is a really strong logo option. Jessica, if we want to go to number two. So this is a back one, I think.
Oh, I did, sorry.
Okay, number two. So I am a big fan of number two. Whenever we first started this logo project, this was kind of like my brainchild. It was just kind of the vision that I had for Breckenridge all along. And so it was super easy for me to make this come to life. I love that we've got a little bit bolder letters here on city of, whereas on the other one, it was a little bit more subtle. This one's a little bit more bold. We've still got the in God we trust. We still have the outline of the Texas, which I think is one of the absolute, absolute most necessary pieces of our logo to come because almost everywhere you go, that's outside of, you know, a hundred or 200 miles of Breckenridge, people instantly think that you're talking about Colorado. So we have to have that Texas front and center where there's no question of which Breckenridge we're talking about. And again, that star placement, the dot over the I is very specific. That's where Breckenridge is on the map. And we've got that internal and external version. And on the paper, you can see this translates really nicely, again, to letterhead, business card, envelope. And it translates well to the trucks, even though I think this, this representation's a little bit off-center vertically, so sorry about that. But you can see that the main identifiers, which is the Texas and the Breckenridge, are both very clear. And if you were to drive down the road and pass this fleet vehicle, you would know that this was a city, a city vehicle. And then T-shirts and all of the promo gear, I think it looks really nice. Breckenridge is extremely bold. It's the focus of the logo, which is exactly what we want. Let's go ahead and go to option number three. So same concept here. Now I would say that this logo is even more symmetrical than the other. I love this logo, how it uses the outline of Texas as the parameters for the design, kind of like the first one, except on this one, we don't have that B. There's a, you're kind of team logo one or team logo three here of whether that decorative B is a little bit too much or not. So on this one, we've got a little bit different font, a little bit less blocky and something with a little bit more character here, but the same concepts apply as logo number one. The star is very specifically placed. We've got that internal versus that external version. Translates great across paper. You're not going to run into any issues there. Looks great on the vehicles. The Texas and the Breckenridge are both very dominant. And then same with all of the merchandise. And I think that both this logo and logo number one, I always try to consider how this logo is going to translate specifically to embroidery. Because when you go to like stitching things, size matters. And so, you know, this logo, when it was embroidered on a hat or something, may take just a hair of a, of a different shape when it came to the fine details like the lines and stuff, instead of there being a double line. We may find ourselves with one line just because of, you know, the needle stitching and stuff like that. But all in all, this logo is going to translate well across all different mediums. And then let's look at option number four. So option number four. And this was designed to be kind of a badge look. On this one, you'll notice that the internal versus the external options are more, they vary more than the other ones. This one's a more significant difference. One thing that we do like about this one is it's got the year that we are established. So that's always great to have a nod to our history. But this one has a lot more fine detail. So as I've pointed out, pros and cons with all of these, I want to do the same with this one. This one has some cons for me, and that's only because of the way that it's going to translate across the different mediums, because it's got a lot of fine details. And so when it comes to embroidery or something, there is a chance that this one loses some of its details as it translates across different mediums. So for that reason, I see this logo being potentially a little bit harder for us, but nothing that we can't work around. So you, there are a lot of towns that are kind of going towards this badge look. Weatherford is a good example of one of those. And so they are, they're, this is kind of a, I would say, a little bit more modern look. But it looks great on paper. It looks pretty good on the vehicle. To me, it feels a little less bold than some of the other options. But then going back to the T-shirt and the different merch items, I think that it looks really great. So Cynthia, Jessica, is there anything that I left out on any of these logos that y'all feel like needs to be pointed out?
No, I think you did a great job and I did want to commend both you and Sala on, on the collaboration. You all did fantastic and were a pleasure to work with. So we really appreciate working with you guys.
Awesome. Well, it was our pleasure. And like I said, I am very passionate about Breckenridge. And honestly, Sala is passionate about every project that touches her hands. So she's a wonderful colleague and a great person to have in my, in my back pocket when it comes to needing a resource, especially for things like this. So we just so appreciate y'all's time. We can't wait to see what your final choice is on the logo. I'm super fired up that, just, just for change, positive change. So I hope you guys are all as excited as we are about all of this.
All right. Thank you guys so much. Really appreciate everything.
All right, no action at this time. We'll discuss this action now. For thirteen, for the Mac City Manager's Stat Report.
Okay, I did want to just give you an update on the street project. We were waiting, as I explained before, right on was waiting for the bridge at Live Oak that Tech Stop was working on for that concrete to cure. And that is 30 days since it's been poured. So they are looking at the availability for material and they think they can get it this week. So they should be finishing up. And that's going to be, you know, the Live Oak and Elm intersection, excuse me. And then also we're doing more and I've explained that because of the Tech Stop project. So we should be able to almost pave all the way from that bridge, almost down boat walker in that project. That'll be good. And then we've got the intersection at Hartford and Holom over by the hospital. This still needs to be done. And, and then finally the striping. And so that'll be the stop signs along Rose Elliott and Seventh Street and then the curves on Elliott and Rose. And then we will also be striping the parking areas in downtown Breckenridge. So that should be wrapping up in the next week. Obviously weather dependent on the striping. So I wanted to give you that support. The other, we just wanted to go over, this is the, is the Stephen Gully and Lot Chamber has lots of fun events coming up and we're so excited. They're doing the mingle and jingle, which is a two-day event this year. So the Christmas tree lighting will be on November 17th. And then mingle and jingle is both days, the 17th and the 18th. You've already put out, you know, there's a lot of merchants that are participating in that. I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to add. They got the Christmas tree up today and.
They'll be at six o'clock. It'll be the Christmas tree lighting. And this year we'll do all downtown lighting too. So they'll be, all the lights will turn on at the same time. So I'm so excited about that. And then we'll also have some kiddos singing carols with the band this year. Dardar's daycare will be, they'll have their kids out there. So I'm excited about that.
And thank you, beauty. I appreciate that. Great event and I know you guys put a lot of work into that. This Friday, it is Veterans Day, so the city offices will be closed in observance of that. We do have our city employee Thanksgiving potluck coming up on November 21st. And then our employee Christmas party, which you all are invited to. And we'll be sending those invites. That'll be December 2nd at the Women's Forum Building. And those are the upcoming events. And those are the upcoming events.
Thank you. And the turn back city manager.
Yeah, this is actually, I'm going to have to buy your chief, you know, we do, we're doing recognition of our employees. We have great employees all the way around. And so this, this week, this month, it's fire.
Don't judge him on his looks. Or he's brawn. Nothing than that. Chad worked for the city for 10 years in the position of a firefighter. When he started out, he didn't know much at the time because he just got rookie school. And over the past 10 years, he's come very proficient. He's a good worker, self motivated. Our department gained some of its uniqueness from his presence. Chad has influenced on our community from involvement with his family and his family activities. Our community, our community is well served by his service and dedication to this position. Chad, here's your prize. No, sir. That's his time.
There is a gift card on there too.
Okay. Good job, Chad.
All right, we'll move to consent agenda. Commission, if you'll look at items five through 12, need to take one up, let us know. If not, we'll take one motion for all of them. Just while we can get ready for somebody to start making a motion.
I move to approve consent agenda items got through 12 as presented.
Second, motion second all in favor.
Aye.
Approved. Thank you guys. First thing discussed and any necessary action regarding branding and logo developments. We'll go back to that.
Okay. So as you guys know, we did do a survey. We did a staff survey, an internal survey. And then we use Survey Monkey also to do an external survey. And so these are the results. We did have about, what was it, 500 that up there? Almost 600 responses, close to 600. So logo one with that two tone V came in at 30%. And then logo option two came in at 28%. Logo option four came in at 25%. And logo option three came in at 17%. So that was the results of the survey. And so now we're bringing that to you. I mean, I wouldn't necessarily say that you're locked into the going with the, with the high one. But I mean, obviously you guys know that a lot of people like number one. So it's really up in.
What did you like in house?
I think option one was this favorite shot.
I like it. I like one of the two. They're all, they're all some of us, yeah.
Well, and option four is, well, three, but option four is, is good. It's, I think, you know, Catherine kind of touched on, how does it show up in those other mediums? So.
I like them because there's no question. Is that a cow? We're not, you know, ask for children's, whether that's a dog.
What do y'all think, guys? What's your thought?
I mean, my thought is if, if the citizens, I mean, we have, you said almost 600 people. That's pretty.
And that is a mix, and that was a mix of between staff.
Yeah.
That's, that's pretty good. I mean, I think.
I realize that's more of the turnout than vote.
I know.
So this, this is good. This is good.
At the participation.
I, I don't think there's a wrong choice personally. I agree. Like Catherine said, it's all part of the change. It's all, it's all a good thing. So. I, I agree. But it's like if, if in-house kind of lean towards one, I personally lean towards one. And if the, if the city leaned towards one.
I like it. I like one. Want to make a motion concerning that?
I'll, I'll do it. I move to approve updated branding and logo option number one.
Motion second all in favor. Aye. All right, guys. Thank you so much.
Well, we'll, we'll get these updated too. And yeah, we're excited. We're going to implement a lot of this.
Discussing any necessary action regarding closure of the 16 foot wide alley in block 68 of the original town of Breckenridge and conveyance to abutting property owners. And we'll turn it back over to Cynthia.
So the owners of Bear Chevrolet had approached the city several months ago with their desire to update their property. They're going to be building a new showcase center and service center. And they basically own almost all of that block. And this is, you can see where that is. The two Southwest properties, they do not own. And so what their request was, and this is only one part of it. EDC is considering their request for an economic incentive for a sewer line replacement. So their request was because they're going to be redoing that and investing over, you know, $3 million on this property. They're wanting that sewer line to be replaced because they're going to pave over it. And they don't want to have to go back. You know, if they, if we didn't replace it and pave over it and then have to, you know, dig up the concrete or the asphalt. So to do that, what basically we're proposing that we would close that alley. And when we do that legally, we have to give half of that alley to the abutting property owners. And so they would get, you know, almost three quarters of it. And then the two property owners from Southwest would get, you know, the south eight feet, that alley is 16 feet. And we will preserve an easement of 16 feet. Because we do obviously have a sewer line and there are also other utilities in, in the alley. And so what is before you tonight is just closing that alley and then conveying that to the abutting property owners. And that's, you've got the information. I have talked to the property owners. They're willing to accept that property. And obviously Bear is as well. So I don't know if you have any questions on that.
Guys, any thoughts, questions?
Can they, they still can't build over that 16 foot roadway, correct?
Well, you can build over, I mean, like put the asphalt over.
Well, no, structured, I guess.
Right. No, you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to because then you're liable for that. But yes, that's why we're, we're first area of an easement.
Motion on that thing?
I move to approve ordinance 23, approving the closure of the 16 foot wide alley on block 68 in the original town of Breckenridge to pay it to abutting property owners.
Second, motion second all in favor. Aye. Unopposed. Thank you. Any items you want for the next agenda maybe at this point? Nothing at the moment? 16:00 PM, we are adjourned. Thank all of y'all.